Public comment on agenda items, and I see we have a few people lined up, so I'm gonna guess we have some public comment. Is there someone who wishes to speak tonight on agenda items? Did you want to speak, sir? On items that are on the agenda? Okay. Go ahead and step to the microphone. Oh.
Did I go first?
You can.
All right.
We do need your name and address.
I think everybody knows me, but I'm John Clark, 4665 Swadley Street. And I think I only got about two minutes, but I'm gonna go ahead and set my timer anyway. First off, I think we should thank the voters of Wheat Ridge for soundly defeating both 2A and 2B. I personally can't wait for spring when we can get 38th restriped back to four lanes and get on with the citizens, business owners and property owners of Wheat Ridge, turning 38th Avenue back to a vibrant, business-friendly Main Street. Second, I'll just speak briefly about the budget. Last month, we were down here and we heard about a nearly $900,000 shortfall. Now with the defeat of 2B, we should have at least the $750,000 that was set aside to begin construction on 38th as a surplus back into the budget. And that only leaves about $150,000 as a shortfall. From last month's budget study session, we also see over $200,000 going to Wheat Ridge 2020 in seven or eight different categories. The easiest and simply the right thing to do is stop funding Wheat Ridge 2020. Even the blind among us can see clearly at this point that Wheat Ridge 2020 is no longer conducting the business that the city originally funded them for. Also, they have been funded at the taxpayer expense a lot longer than originally planned. And finally, they've become a political machine that has been financially endorsing and supporting certain issues and candidates while trashing others. There's no doubt Wheat Ridge 2020 has a right to do what they want, but the time has come for the city to stop funneling money to any one-sided political organization. It is not the Wheat Ridge taxpayers' duty to fund Wheat Ridge 2020 any longer. So I hope council is above calling for cuts to key city services just because 2A failed. I'm sure this council can rise above using the budget to cut essential city services in an operation of retaliation, or I told you so, against 60% of the electorate. Thanks again to all of the voters of Wheat Ridge that came out and soundly defeated both 2A and 2B. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes, Tom Slattery, 6869 West 32nd Avenue. I'm not gonna tell you the reasons I don't like the 38th Avenue plan and voted against it because you know what my position is, but I do request that as soon as possible the street be restriped back to four lanes and immediately get those planters and other obstructions out of the right of way. They're nothing but a traffic hazard. Thank you.
Herb Shaw, 3900 Garrison Street. Again, I've been here several times opposing 38th Street, but as a voting citizen since November 1963, I believe the voters certainly told you, council members, that we do not like 38th to what you put it to. Put it back the way it was. We citizens want it the way it was. We moved here, we built our homes here because the way it was. We did not want all that fancy stuff and flower pots and everything and backing in. Very dangerous. We don't want it that way. Please put it back the way it was. 2A and 2B were defeated. You're given the message. Please do what we residents, voters, would like you to do. Thank you.
Anyone else speaking tonight? No? Yes? Okay. A little bit shorter.
Good evening. My name is Leah Dozeman. Tonight I am here to thank City Council.
Need your address?
Oh, 4364 Hoyt Street. Tonight I am here to thank City Council members for unanimously deciding to put issue 2B on the ballot so the people could have their say. The people have spoken and 2B was soundly defeated with 7,759 people representing 57.3% of the voters opposing the narrowing of 38th, while 5,781 or 42.7% of the voters being in favor of the initiative. I'm here to ask that council members listen to the majority of the people that voted against 2B. I read a quote in the Neighborhood Gazette by City Manager Patrick Goff that says, "Goff disagrees with that assessment." He said, "No vote is not being viewed as a referendum of sorts on 38th Avenue plan. There are no immediate plans to do anything different with 38th Avenue," he said. "The city still has an adopted 38th Avenue corridor plan, which is still relevant in my mind." 2B was only asking voters to approve a new street width. Maybe this statement could be clarified a little bit, but in my opinion, it sounds like some staff and members of the City Council plan to forge ahead despite the sweeping defeat of 2B. A council that unanimously voted to put the issue to the people cannot simply ignore the will of the people, even though the final outcome may not have represented each of your individual positions. You are all representatives of the people, and we expect you to adhere to us and listen to us, and we soundly defeated 2B. Thank you.
Do we have other speakers?
Hello, good evening. I got in just a few minutes late. Do I get three minutes on each agenda item right now, or do I need to sit and come back up?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I'd like to speak on...
You want three minutes on each item on the agenda?
Yeah. Do I do that right here, right now, or do I sit down and come back up?
I'm sorry?
Think your rules are one, three minute?
One, three minute. It's not per agenda item. I think it's per speaker.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, let me see if I can make that work then. Vivian Voss, Vias and Victor O.S., 6920 West 47th Place. Trying to set my timer. Okay.
I have it here.
Okay, I got it. I would like to speak to the budget. Specifically, I'm seeing notations regarding Wheat Ridge 2020. $50,000 allotted for community engagement and communications, and I would suggest that maybe that be used to find out in a survey online or a mailing survey what Wheat Ridge citizens actually want for 38th Avenue. Line, $15,000 citywide marketing and positioning tours. It says for realtors, developers, new residents. Maybe that can also include new businesses that the council or staff can find to bring into the city, and it can be used positively in that way. $15,000 for Ridge at 38th banners and lights program. My question, I guess, would be where on 38th Avenue are the lights going to go? And then also, goal number three, $35,000 expansion of, no, sorry, goal number three, desirable neighborhoods. I think that all speaks well to money well-used. We've heard in the past at study sessions, I think it is, that there's $50,000 per year in the Urban Renewal Authority budget that somehow comes from that Wheat Ridge cyclical sales tax usage, and I suggest that that be used more on 38th as the, to carry out some landscaping, the trash bins, benches, things that we've talked about before. And I guess I would just like to say that we've had the vote, we've had the issue discussed way more than probably it needs to be. There needs to be some accountability of the council to the citizens. I would suggest that the council seriously take into account the vote that was made and get out to some town hall meetings that you very well presented for the 1% tax increase, and also do some mailings and some surveys, whether they be online or not. And I would suggest that we all just work together positively and move forward in a good way for Wheat Ridge's overall benefit. Thank you.
Monica Duran, 2980 Uppham Street. The residents of Wheat Ridge have spoken in regards to 2B, and their voices were resounding. As elected officials, our local government has a duty and a responsibility to hear the people, not only to hear the people, but to truly listen. The citizens that voted no on 2B want a vibrant economy. They want more jobs, increased revenue, and community centerpieces. However, this needs to be done in an open forum with a clear plan and with strong strategy built around it. That's why the citizens of Wheat Ridge ask you today to return 38th Avenue back to four lanes. The last election was divisive. It pitted neighbor against neighbor and business against business. I humbly ask that you learn from past mistakes and remember to not lose touch with the very citizens that put you here, despite what personal gains some of you may inherit from a particular vote. As we move forward, we will not always agree, but the citizens of Wheat Ridge want the city, community, and its leaders to work together, to develop and nourish a strong economic plan for Wheat Ridge, based on what will work for this city with our values and our eyes toward the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I'm a resident of District One and Wheat Ridge 2020's executive director. Good evening. I wanted to say, first of all, thanks to the city for your continued partnership. I was at the Downtown Colorado Institute Conference not too long ago, and I was talking to the person in charge of economic development for Westminster, and it was a nice full-circle moment for me. When I first started taking, when I first took this job and I was living and working in Wheat Ridge, people would say, "Oh, you mean Westminster?" And I was like, "No, we're our own town. We are Wheat Ridge." And at this conference, the person, Tony, from Westminster, was saying, "All I hear about is Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge. You guys are doing so much stuff." And my council always wants to hear about you guys, so I just thought you would appreciate knowing that others have taken notice. And I think a lot of that's due to your investment here with your budget. That's one of the ways that you speak as a council and as a city. And there's a couple things that I wanted to draw your attention to. One, I wanted to thank the city staff. I know that's a big expense in the city budget, but it's what makes a great experience for a lot of citizens as a city staff who are there to take care of those issues and to be present in lots of different situations to serve our community. I also wanted to point out a couple of things about Wheat Ridge 2020 that are in the proposed cuts for this evening. I understand that you have difficult decisions to make. There's always tight resources, and there's a couple things I wanted to draw your attention to. A previous speaker brought up one of them, and I'll speak to one of her other points, too. She mentioned the tours. Yes, the marketing and positioning tour's been going really well, and I did want to clarify, they are available to all residents, all new businesses. There's some specialized marketing tours for realtors, for mid-century modern tours, for new residents, and then there's another tour called Explore Wheat Ridge. It was a fantastic experience. We have people who've lived in the city over 50 years who have come on the tours and all came away with something to report and something new to try, which is one of our goals with those tours. Another that I especially wanted to draw your attention to is this community engagement and communications. Of all the things that are on the $91,000 of Wheat Ridge 2020-related items to cut, that's the one that I would like to most vocally defend. This request helps address some of the city's anticipated requests for our help with neighborhood engagement around neighborhood signage and traffic calming, implementation of the housing diversification strategies. The city is also interested in Wheat Ridge 2020 helping to manage the Civic Academy. So there's some things that we put for some staff time there in particular, and I need to start wrapping it up. It's probably the cut that most impacts our strategic plan. We get, oh, it's on yellow. It's the thing that most impacts our strategic plan as people want to hear about what we're doing and how we're impacting the community, but we need funding for our communications. We're looking at restructuring our staff to a part-time communications position. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. One more speaker here, or who knows?
Kristy Thompson, 3200 J Street, District One, Wheat Ridge. I'd just like to ask that the councils really start listening to the people that voted you into office and return 38th to the four lanes that it was and get rid of the bottleneck that's there, and then maybe the taxpayers would loosen up their belts and to be able to do some improvements that are much needed on 38th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more? Any more? I don't think so. Looks like we can go ahead with the meeting. Okay. The first item on our meeting tonight is the 2015 budget, which will be quite a discussion. And part of the work we're probably gonna have to do tonight will be looking to trim the budget or certainly look at some of the items that have been suggested as we trim the budget, because we're working on a situation now where council asks staff to reduce the budget to the point where we were not using any reserves at all. And I might, just as a thought, that unless somebody has something they want to jump right in with, that perhaps we first should start with, just a suggestion, that if there's specific items that you also want to add to the list on the back here of trimming, if there's some other items that perhaps we would have them all gathered up and then can do some sort of a sorting process as to which items could perhaps stay and which have to go. Is that a reasonable way, or would you rather do it, just go right ahead and jump in with whatever somebody has to say?
Well, it might be best if I give an overview of what was presented to council, so everybody's on the same page.
That'll be great.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, as you mentioned, the direction that we did receive from City Council at the October 20th study session was to bring back a budget, that general fund budget that was balanced, not using the general fund reserves to balance the general fund budget. So that is what you see in front of you with several different options and proposals. If you remember correctly, we, the original proposed budget that we presented was using just under $800,000 of the general fund reserves to balance the 2015 general fund operating budget. We did provide a list of items that's on attachment one of your study session memo. That is a list that totals the $794,206,000, which would get us a balanced budget. A lot of these items were items that were mentioned by City Council or discussed at the October 20th study session. We tried to address each of those comments that were brought by City Council, and we can go through each of these individually if you'd like. Council does then have several options beyond balancing the general fund budget, if you want to stop there. We have some options for the capital investment program budget. As you all know, the City Council has a general fund reserve policy to maintain a minimum of a 17% reserve. Target is 25%, and the max is 35%. So we laid out several different options in your staff memo for you to consider. The first one, on the first page in the chart, first column is the original proposed budget. Second column is balancing the budget. And the third option, option one, is balancing the budget but then transferring an additional amount of money to the CIP budget. And the option number two, the third option, is transferring no funds to the CIP budget to increase your reserves to the target of 25%. So each of those have different impacts on the CIP budget. The original budget that we proposed to City Council was a budget of $6.2 million of CIP projects. A good chunk of those, almost $4 million, are funded by grants, so those will have to be completed. The original proposed budget also included $1.6 million in preventative street maintenance. That's our primary line item in the CIP budget for our annual street maintenance. Then there were several other smaller projects that we've, that city staff proposed in the Going into option one, if we do balance the general fund budget, but then also transfer more, that would allow us to transfer more money to the CIP budget and keep a 17% reserve, you could bump up your preventative street maintenance from $1.6 million to $3.3 million, and then also fund, of course, we'd still have to fund the grant-funded programs, and then also fund a few other priority CIP projects that staff feels are priorities and should be completed. Option two is to not transfer any general fund reserves to the CIP budget. That would allow you to do about $900,000 in preventative maintenance and your grant-funded projects and a couple other priority projects, and that would allow you to keep a 25% general fund reserve. So you could mix and match a little bit between these different options, but those are kind of three different options, including council's recommended option from October 20th that we can use as discussion points for tonight.
I think we have to either discuss the options or...
Yeah. And again, the first, you know, the consensus that we received, staff received, was to balance the budget, so I guess maybe that's a good place to start. We brought forward a list of items to do that, and we can present a proposed balanced budget to City Council, and then maybe after that we could talk about if you want to take it further or what impacts on the CIP budget you would like to see.
I just would like to make a general statement. I don't see the logic of increasing our savings at a time when we're also cutting projects and items from our budget that are needed and beneficial to the city as a whole. We actually don't have 17%. We have 30, we have 20%, because we have an additional 3%, isn't that correct?
Well, the additional 3% is designated as a Tabor Reserve, which...
Yes, but it is there for catastrophe.
Emergencies.
So we actually do have 20%.
We do, but the 3% is restricted for emergencies.
Right. Well, that's right.
Well, there is a difference.
That's what this...
There's a big difference.
17% is, too.
It's unusable unless you meet a state-mandated emergency, so it's not funds that are liquid. That's a very important point.
If you think of 17% of our total budget or of our budget, there's hardly any catastrophe I can think of that would totally decimate that. If we lost one of our major tax generators, we still would have all of our other tax generators. I don't see us needing to save 25%. I just can't see a situation in which we need that much, and I think right now we need to spend money on capital improvement because we have, this city has momentum right now. We're hot, we're going. We need to be able to encourage that in every way we possibly can. So I personally still prefer the original proposal, but failing that, since I know we voted on that, I would like to suggest we consider option one, because option one, we can make our capital improvements, and we can also meet our required, our 17% goal. So that's what I would suggest.
Do we have further discussion on that proposal, Ms. Langworthy?
I have a couple questions when I'm looking at the budget cuts. Just looking at potential future damage of expenses that aren't being, you know, utilized now. The Cisco firewall, that's a substantial thing to have on your city. You don't want to lose, you don't want your information to be breached, and you don't want to lose your system, correct?
Correct.
So, is, I mean, I know that you have it in there as a cut, but is it not a substantial thing that we need as a maintenance?
Well, everything on this list, I would love to keep.
You have data, people's data.
No, you are, you are correct. It's, there's risks and challenges of making any cuts. There are some that are easier and some are not. And we've considered this one. We talked to our IT manager. He said it can wait probably another year, but it is just putting it off as an expense that we're putting off to another year. And, you know, it's something I'd rather not do, but it's either that or finding something else to cut.
All right. And then, I get that. I mean, and I trust the IT guy knows more about computers than I do. I just, when I see a firewall cut from the budget, it worries me a little bit, because you may, you may believe it's safe, but you don't know when that might breach, and then, you know...
There's a risk.
There's, and it's data that we don't want to lose. And then the LED retrofit, is there a benefit that we get from, so having done that, is there not potential benefit?
There's long-term cost savings, there would be, potentially, in our energy expenses.
And then I'm looking at, I'm kind of with Tim on option one. I feel that 17%, 17% kind of fits what we need, and it's where we've been at for a while. I think, though, that that equipment transfer is something that we put in and we take out, we put in and we take out, but that's another one of those things that if we're not kind of saving for our future, the impact on this is going to be substantial. And I would like to see that $2,460,000 at least lowered to move $125,000 into the equipment transfer, because that, that's not just vehicle, that's not really vehicles, right? That's software upgrades or...
Yeah, the equipment transfer fund, we set up several years ago to, like Ms. Langworthy mentioned, to save money over time for those large infrastructure, equipment replacement projects. Since our financial management system needs replaced here soon, the police department's computer-aided dispatch record management system are multimillion-dollar systems, and instead of taking a hit in one year, we'd like to save the money up.
So that's like a savings fund?
It's a savings fund, yes.
Okay, Ms. Davis.
So I have just a couple questions. So I know that a lot of these were suggestions and from our group. Some of these, because this is your priority-based budget model, did this go back, you know, good news, bad news, if I do this. So did we go back to the departments and say, "Hey, 2A didn't pass? Go back to your priority. What's low priority? What is things that you could offset for here?" I mean, did we go back to each department and ask them to make the cuts? Because I don't know that I see any of that in here. I kind of just see our recommended ones.
We did. We asked every department to look at their, specifically their three and, their third and fourth quadrants, which are the lower priority. and fourth quadrants, which are the lower priority projects. There are, there were a few. We have a list from each department. Some departments had more difficult time finding things, the smaller departments. Trying to think of any of these, Heather or Nate, on this list are from that exercise. Yeah, a few of these are definitely from that exercise, but we tried to also address council's comments that were made at the October twentieth study session.
So I will say that, as you can see my sticky notes, I can't by all means say that, I, I mean, I have a few suggestions. And I guess going through here, I mean, we could take, I mean, I think we look at some of the bigger cuts and, you know, one, I would like to say thank you. I see the PTO buyback program. Unfortunately, I know that that's a benefit to our employees, but it's just increasing our employees' salary, which is going to cost the city more money. So, you know, I think that that's a good move and we just encourage folks to take time off instead of adding it to your salary. So I do appreciate seeing that, and I'm guessing that was one that came from the priority based or, or someone said, someone better do this or Christie's going to bring it up, one of the two. But then, you know, going through here, I will say, and I know that by all means, these are not my departments and I can't say for any reason that I run your departments, but I can say that in general, there are some things in here that I think that we could do better on. And I would say that in most departments, the conference and meeting fees went up. And I think in lean years, those probably don't need to be going up. If anything, they should be reduced a little bit. Again, it might only be by five hundreds and a thousands, but if you get me and my pen and paper together, five hundreds and a thousands add up pretty quick. So I guess the conference and meeting fees, I do see here, though, IT did cut theirs, but I could go through here and see that there's a significantly, I know the police went up five thousand in the administration department. And I just, that's five thousand dollars. I mean, if I pull that from every department, it adds up. And then I have my sticky note, and I, but I first, before I say this in my sticky note, for the grants, for the police funds, so that, that is staffing one FTE, correct? Instead of the three? So it looks like there's a savings or there's a cut, but really it's grants that we're receiving, so it's kind of no, no increase, no cut, correct? So like, for instance, in 2014, the budget was two hundred and seventy-four thousand, almost two hundred and seventy-five, and in 2015, it's a hundred and forty-two. But that's actually grant money that they're receiving. It's not like they just cut their budget two hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct. You're talking about in their grant, their grant division, yes.
So that's, even though it looks like a two hundred and fifty dollar, look at, we're saving money, we're really not saving money in that line item.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I mean, we're also not spending it because we're not hiring more officers. With that being said, and again, this is where, I do think we need to look at other programs, 2020, what we give to our community as far as outreach and those types of things. But the police department, if I added everything up on my sticky notes, is four hundred and eighty-five thousand more this year than last. But if you add the grant money, which really isn't grant money, so they're really not saving money, so it looks like a savings, but really they're spending two hundred and something more somewhere else. So if you dig into the numbers and not the bottom line, it's four hundred something thousand dollars. But it, the grant makes it look like they saved two hundred and something, but they really didn't. You'd have to, I can, I have it on sticky notes, but I can show you later. But, but I just think that there's some places in some of these departments, and that's why I asked with the third and fourth quadrants of budgeting, did we really go back and say, can we do better? I mean, personally, if I have a, if it were me, I would say that no one, that each department needs to be at budget of where they were last year, unless there's some kind of justification of why. And I know we started off with the seven hundred and fifty, and I appreciate that and I thank you. But even knowing where 2A is, I just think that there's a little bit of nip and tuck that we could do, that could, even if it means a different program. But I think when, when, you know, if the police department comes back and says, well, it's this amount because, you know, we're doing this new radio system that we already committed to last year, or whatever it might be, then that is what it is. But if there's things that we can nip and tuck, five thousand dollars in conferences and meetings and things like that, then I just, you know, I would like to see those efforts as long, as well as some of ours that we kind of know off the cuff. And, and I think, you know, I, again, I do appreciate that we took the, you know, that the employees are absorbing the five percent increase in health insurance. I will tell you, I probably took a forty percent increase in health insurance and same with a lot of our members in our community. So, so that is good that our employees are absorbing that. But I do think even, and I know we're doing the, the four hundred and fifty thousand of the benefits or bonus program and, you know, I think all those things need to be discussed. And to me, I think everyone, there should be give and take in every area. In the public sector, there might be programs that go, and even in our situation, you know, I'm happy to take less money for my outreach so we can put it somewhere.
Okay, you've settled.
I know. So anyway, so just in general, that's my thoughts of the budget.
Can I respond to a couple of things? I mean, you know, you did mention there, I mean, there was, there is, there is about a four hundred thousand dollar increase in the police department budget. And I mean, if we want to go in great detail, we can, but, because there are explanations to a lot of, a lot of these things. Hundred and seventy thousand of that, just as an example, is an increased assessment for the Foothills Animal Shelter for just one year. There was a loan that has to be paid off for the construction of that new building. The foundation that raises money for the shelter didn't raise the money in five years, so all the cities have to divide it up and pay it. So there is, hundred and seventy of that, four hundred-
I did see that.
Is that. So, I mean, there are different, there are some explanations for some of the increase, which, but, but you're right. We, the consensus we got was to do a balanced budget. We can, if there's consensus now to do further cuts, we can. Departments did provide more examples of things they could cut. We didn't present those tonight at this point, but that's something we can do if that's a consensus of the council.
Okay. Mr. Duttulio.
I really don't want to rush this tonight because we got, as a body, as a council, we had to discuss this budget, and so I don't want to go through this based on your email earlier that said, let's get it done fast and make it quick.
Wait, that was not at all the gesture of my email, at all.
So anyway, I want to basically say to council that I think that option one and option two really don't solve the problem of the budget. I, I've always felt that our minimum and maximum reserves were out of line with the rest of the front range. Mostly like Lakewood, Narvada and Golden are eight to fifteen percent, we're seventeen to twenty-seven percent. So it's creating an artificial shortage in our budget, in my opinion, but that's another discussion with our budget policy, which I don't really think it's, like Tim said, we're, right now, we should be looking at spending the money in the capital area and not necessarily cutting because that's where we can have the biggest bang for our buck. So I really don't support option one or two because I don't want to cut the capital budget. My concern is this, 2A failed and the budget, the budget proposed before the ballot question was that about a four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries and adjustments to three percent raises, basically, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the employees. Plus, they were going to eat five percent of the increased cost of insurance. So I don't want to penalize the public on the capital side. I don't want to penalize the employees on their salaries and wages because they spend a lot of time, effort going through their performance review. But they've, we have given out salary adjustments the last few years, and so my suggestion would be is that we would eliminate the salary raises for 2015, but that the city would absorb the forty-five thousand dollars extra that's going to cost the employees for their insurance. Talking to Heather through email, she had indicated that the additional cost of insurance for the, for the employees for 2015 was going to be forty-five thousand dollars. So we don't want to give them a pay cut by taking away their salary, by taking away insurance benefits. So my suggestion would be is that because they went through the review process and the, and the performance-based budgeting and they pay for performance reviews, that we would not have salary adjustments right now, take that out of the budget. The city would pay for the additional cost of the insurance and then in June or July, as Ms. Davis had mentioned earlier, if our budget looks strong in June or July, we'd do the stipends again in the middle of the year. So that, that's a one-time stipend to the employees, you've done it in the past. It doesn't build to the base of our costs for the future. So in June or July, we would look at the budget and say, okay, we're, we're at a good point, we can do some stipend. And in the meantime, the city cover the cost of the additional insurance of the forty-five to fifty thousand dollars, whatever that's going to be. That would save us right there, half of the budget that council had wanted to balance with for the eight hundred thousand. And I think, then you could add some of these back, some of these back in, like the Cisco firewall. So that's where I'm at. I think that we got to say right now, there's not going to be any salary adjustments until we see what the budget looks like in the middle of 2015, that at that time, we could do a budget amendment for stipends as needed. And then in the meantime, we cover the insurance costs of the forty-five to fifty thousand dollars for the employees, so they're not taking a pay cut.
So where are you in these here? Is there one that comes closer to where you are?
Well, option one would be closer, and then if you, if you were to take the salary off the table, that, that's four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you wouldn't have to spend towards salary adjustments, and you could maybe bring back some of these important ones, like Ms. Langworthy mentioned, the Cisco broader security information, so that's where I'm at. Then I also wanted to ask Patrick, where were we on the vehicles? You cut one vehicle out of there on this?
Cut one new vehicle, yeah. The rest are all replacements.
Was there any more there that you could cut?
No, not, not recommended, no.
And then what was the forty-four, let's see, Forty-Fourth Avenue reconciliation? What is that?
It's just some GIS mapping to get our mapping correct with Jefferson County. It's, there's some inaccuracies, something we've been cutting for the last five years.
How about the renewal Wheat Ridge annual contribution? Why would we cut that?
We talked about that study session. That's-
Oh, that's right, that's right. I got that, okay, I got that. I remember that one. Then the speed trailers with options, I think those were important to maybe look at, re-putting it back in because the speed trailers are important to the community. That's out of capital expenditure, I think that was important. Speed trailers, we've got two right now and they're very well-used. Anyway, that's my, that's my recommendations, that we would forego salary adjustments, pay for the additional cost of the insurance for the employees, and then come back in June or July and look at stipends. Then that would free up four twenty-five in the budget that would be not necessarily spent on salaries and wages, and come back to this list and see what's important to bring, to put back in the list.
Okay, we have several big ones on the floor. Ms. Davis, you were looking at cutting the, I believe it was, training and travel, conferences, et cetera. Perhaps some other 2020 outreach programs.
I mean, one of my suggestions, you know, I would be, I mean, I do think, I just kind of figured it out and this isn't a rough amount, but the forty-five thousand ti, divided by twelve, divided by two hundred and thirty employees, and I know that's probably not how many we have insured. I don't know how many we have insured, but it's like eighteen dollars a month. So I, you know, to me, I, you know, I think for an employee to absorb that, you know, I mean, it's, it's not something I'd want to do, but I think it's the real world. I mean, again, I think if you ask anybody as far as health insurance premiums and that kind of stuff, I mean, okay, this is the government, so, you know, I'm told it's different, but I'm sorry, but our neighbors all are absorbing healthcare costs. I don't know that I'd call it a pay cut, so to speak. It's just a cost that's, you know, the benefit's costing a little bit more. So I think forty-five thousand, I'd be, I'd be more apt to commit to the stipend. Or even if we do a two and a half percent increase and it's a stipend or bonus. But again, I think the forty-five thousand for our, for our staff to absorb, again, I don't know how many insured there are, but if I figured it out, it's like eighteen dollars a month. So, you know, again, those are rough numbers because it said we had two hundred and thirty employees, so I don't know if all two hundred and thirty are insured and that type of thing. So I just don't think it's a lot for someone to absorb.
Okay, and then Mr. Duttulio has suggested that the employee, the salary increases have been held and that in June or July, we look at them as a possibility of a stipend of sort of a one-time payment, which of course does not add to the occurring and reoccurring cost of employment, but hold on to the, the amount of money that's currently being, that is proposed to be taken away, not taken away, that the employees pay themselves. Any other comments on those large issues? Nope. Mr. Tucker?
Patrick, I had a question on the, your transfers on the, on the CIP budget. Do they, do they still include the two hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Twenty-Ninth and Fenton Street intersection?
They don't. All these proposals would eliminate that in 2015, and we would, we would budget that out in the appropriate year when, when the Ashland project is completed, so probably sixteen or seventeen.
So then that two and a quarter goes to something else in the CIP?
Correct.
Because that's just, okay.
So, including in option one?
Correct. Option, option one, if you look at your memo, if we transfer two point four six million instead of one point four to CIP, and as Mr. Duttulio said, it's a decrease, actually option one is an increase to the CIP budget. We're transferring quite a bit more. Allows us to do three point three million in preventative maintenance instead of one point six. And then a few other, the grant projects, and then a few other projects that we feel are still important. There's some major drainage improvements to some outflow systems that are getting dangerous that need to be replaced. Maple Grove reservoir expense, ADA transition plan to make sure that we're, we have an ADA plan in place for our sidewalks. And then the three grant projects, the Kipling pedestrian improvements, the Tabor Street improvements up at the Gold Line Station and the Wadsworth Pell. And it would not include the Fenton Street project.
Mr. Urban?
When I looked at the records management line item, the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, that, that's for a regionalization of our records management system within the police department.
Correct.
And then we're also adding two staff persons to our records team in-house as a result of that, or is that, why would it be increasing?
The staffing increases in the communication center, the dispatch, the nine-one-one center, not records. There are two separate departments.
It says here with the records team that in 2005, we had five, or in 2012, we had five staff, 2013, we had four.
Oh, there were some reorganizations. Do you want to speak to it, Heather? Do you know what the exact?
I guess, one oh nine. I guess my concern is that if we're regionalizing and spending two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to do so with our records management system, why would it be increasing our staff by two? I would expect that to reduce our staff, not increase it.
Can you explain?
Going to try to explain this. For efficiency purposes, the chief reorged positions that, I want to say this was the true clerk-
Yes.
-positions, and so he combined those into the records team, so that's why you see that shift in FTE. Overall, there's no increase in FTE within the department budget, aside from the two dispatchers that Patrick referenced.
They came from patrol operations. You can see there's a two decrease in patrol. The true, our true officers are, we have two folks that are non-sworn officers that take calls from like car accidents and stuff, kind of the minor stuff, so we don't have to tie up a sworn police officer. So, thanks, Heather.
The regionalization of that records management system, that two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar cost, is that something that could be spread out over a number of years? Or what's the impetus behind paying it immediately? If we do have an equipment fund to handle these types of things, I would expect we could finance it over-
That's the initial cost to get into it, because the first year, of course, will be a little more expensive to get the new system in place and that, all the cities and county that are participating are paying similar amounts based on their size. And then the next, there'll be annual maintenance cost once, I think closer to forty thousand, if I remember. So that's the initial cost to get the system up and running. We can't, you can't, we can't spread it out. We can't, you can't, we can't spread it out, um, based on the IGA that we have.
And what is the cost savings that we're receiving by going into that, or what, what are we, um, saving by doing that?
We anticipate if, if we had to purchase our own records management system just for the city Wheat Ridge, it, it could've been a couple million dollars.
Sure. Um, but, uh, I guess it's, don't we already have a records manager?
Yeah, but it's old, old, antiquated. It needs, it's, it needs replaced soon. Um, it's just not compatible with today's, um, world.
Mr. Tullio?
Was the community engagement and communication, I'm sorry, uh, there, I just lost it. It was the, um, the block improvement increase, was that the, its expansion of the eastern Wheat Ridge program?
It was, correct. It's an increase. So the original amount of fifteen thousand was left in of what, um, our current budget is for, um, neighborhood outreach, or, uh, community block grant outreach program.
Just, uh, clarify something. This is just an option to think about. What I was thinking about was option number one, that we would remove the salary increase of three percent until mid-year of two thousand and fifteen as a stipend potentially. Then that, that brings back four hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the budget. We would return the Cisco firewall, the speed trailers, and the block improvement increase, put that back in. That's, that's kinda where I was, you know, as one council member. So option one, with removal of the salary increases or reductions until mid-year two thousand and fifteen, return the Cisco firewall to the budgets, because I, I agree with Ms. Langworthy about the public safety of the data, and also keep the speed trailers because they're very popular and they do help speeding in the neighborhoods. That's a capital improvement I think that we should keep. And then also return the block improvement increase. I think twenty thousand dollars is a huge good investment, especially on the west side of town if we're gonna expand that, that cleanup program. So that's kinda where I was thinking. Thought of consensus, but that's basically my suggestion.
I just want a clarification on the four hundred and fifty thousand for the, the salaries. So you're saying if it's not included here, then in July, a reassessment would be made? And would the employees be guaranteed at that point that it would be given back to them?
No, it'd be up to council, so.
It would, it, we would do a mid-market evaluation of our sales tax receipts and our budget. Staff would come back with a recommendation, and then council would do a budget amendment for that, and then supplemental appropriation. And the stipend has worked in the past. We've, it's been a lump sum check to the city employees based on, on a, on a formula that they have, so.
And is that for six months, or then how does that calculate it? I mean, it'd be on the first of the year.
Well, it's, it could be managed any, anyway, you know. I, I'd like to speak to that, though. You know, I, I think honestly, um, I know staff salaries are always controversial subjects and, but I'm gonna defend them, um, here tonight. Um, you know, I, I think it'd be a much larger damage to this organization and this community to cut out staff salaries at this point instead of cutting out a firewall and speed trailers. Um, we've come a very long way in this community since I've been here in ten years to get our benefits and staffing at a competitive level where we're not losing employees like we used to. Um, recruitment costs are very, very expensive. Um, losing good employees is not beneficial to our community. Um, I would not recommend at this point. Every other community is gonna be doing minimum staff wage, um, salary increases. Um, I don't think we're at that point right now. The original two thousand and fifteen budget that we presented to city council did not anticipate a sales tax increase. Um, so I think we're okay. I, I think we need to watch the budget very closely, see how the revenues end up at the end of this year and beginning of next year, and then if we are having any issues then, I think that's, we need to make, maybe make more cuts then, but I don't think we're at a point today where we need to make these drastic cuts.
Um, I, I just am reluctant to penalize the employees at this point, and, um, I, I understand that's a huge chunk of money that we can easily cut now. I'm wondering if there's some of these other expenses that could be applied the same way. In other words, if, if they're not included right now, could they be included in the same way in an analysis next July?
Right. I mean, to bring them back?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, I missed it. But just real quick, I mean, I would support, I mean, I, I understand, I think it's, you know, to lose somebody's gonna cost us more than, um, if we just try to maintain folk. So I, I understand about the four hundred and fifty, and, you know, I would support that. You know, I guess my only request is, I think we can do better in other areas. I mean, again, it's my world, it's not the pub, you know, the political world and government, but, you know, I mean, do we limit training and travel to, you know, to be more in the States and not fly places this year? And, I mean, I, I could, you know, we can do a lot with that kinda thing. Maybe for the, the police asking for the two FTEs, you know, maybe we could do one FTE now and maybe a little bit later, keep it staggered. So I think there's little ways that that four hundred and fifty, if we cut here and there, could be two hundred and fifty if, if we look at tightening our belts a little bit.
Okay, Mr. Tullio?
I wanted to, I don't think, but my goal wasn't to penalize the employees. In fact, that's why I wanted to pay for the five percent salary or the insurance increase, because we've had, we have good employees and they've, they've been reimbursed over the last few years with stipends and raises. The other option we have is, I think, like I mentioned earlier, a seventeen percent reserve to twenty-seven is a artificially high number for a city, and I think that you could eliminate this in, into the reserve comment if we went to a more reasonable eight to fifteen, or ten to, ten to twenty, or some kind of a reserve policy that was more user-friendly. I mean, Lakewood is eight to fifteen, Arvada's right around eight to fifteen, Golden's...
Lakewood's, just to be fair, Lakewood's has a thirty-five percent reserve right now.
I know, but their, their reserve, but their policy can go down to eight if they had to. So, I mean, I guess, no, Patrick, if, if we're gonna disagree on everything, I'm trying to look for a win-win here.
Not disagreeing on anything, I'm just making sure that, that correct information's out there.
And I don't, you know, we've had these cuts in the past with our employees or didn't give a raise, and they didn't all leave. I mean, it's a good place to work, and I, I respect that they're here and they do a good job, but the reality is, either we're gonna have to forego some raises until June or July, see where our budget is, or let's, let's change this reserve policy so that we're not saying we're cutting into the reserve, because it's an artificial number.
Well, it's, it's not an artificial number. It's, it's, it's recommended by the GF, the GFOA, that seventeen percent, two months of expenditures is, is a recommended reserve. Um, it can change, and, and if council wants to lower it, I'm, I'm fine with that. Um, it's, I guess, I guess we need to decide what we're trying to get at.
Yeah, let's get the reserve.
I provided, you know, I provided, you know, the last consensus I thought was a seventeen percent reserve, um, and then, you know, balance the general public budget. We did that. If, if there's a different direction we need to go, um, I need some clear direction on that so we can, we can manage that. Ms. Davis, and I respect that, there probably are other cuts we can make, and if that's what you wanna do, we need, we're gonna need some time to do that.
Okay, Ms. Langworthy. Oh, Mr.?
I just wanna say I'm okay with seventeen percent. I just don't wanna increase the reserve at a time when we're cutting valuable things.
Okay. Langworthy?
And the other thing that I guess we need to be aware of with that seventeen percent, things come up. We set this budget now, and we're starting with a seventeen percent reserve, but things come up throughout the year, things that we don't have planned for, we're not anticipating. Yeah. So you, well, no, and, and it, true, thirty-second and young film run over. This seventeen percent just gives us some wiggle room throughout the year that if things come up that we can't anticipate for, we can't budget for, that we're not gonna take a hit down the road for. And I, I prefer the seventeen percent because I would rather be a little high on what we have, and when things come up, we're not panicked trying to figure out how to get the money for it. We, we can plan for things and, and be realistic about what we can or cannot do, and we're not, you know, you never wanna be reactive, you wanna be proactive. And seventeen percent allows us the ability to be proactive as things come up instead of reactive and trying to figure out how to come up with the money. So I'm good with the seventeen percent, because I've never seen a year where our budget wasn't amended at some point.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Uh, I'm not asking for consensus, I'm just asking for a straw poll. How many people are okay with seventeen percent?
Man, sure.
One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five. All right. We're, we're good at seventeen. We got one thing figured out.
Well, I'm good with seventeen with the caveat that we don't go around telling people that we're running out of money and going broke, because that's, that's, that's not the case with that number. That's all I'm saying, because that's what we said with two A. The city is running out of money, and when people see what money is in reserve, they don't buy it. That's the general public perception. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, Tim, that's the perception. So if we're, if we're gonna say seventeen percent, I'm, I'm good with that.
I do, I do wanna say that, that isn't that we told the city we were running out of money. What we told the city, which was quite honest, was that we were running out of capital improvement money, that yes, we have enough to operate, but capital improvement is part of that operation. And when you cannot maintain the roads, you, you know what happens. Pretty soon, they get more and more expensive to, to improve, and then you do run out of money. So I just wanted to clear that up. Um, all right, so we've kind of, kind of come to that point, that we have at least agreed that seventeen percent is kinda the area we'd like to sit at. Uh, now, there was some mention of, uh, we have a, a list of cuts here. Uh, did I hear more cuts or something? I'm sorry?
But can I, I mean, can we adjust, I'm, I'm all for option one, but I'd really like to see that one hundred and twenty-five thousand pulled out of the CIP and moved into that equipment transfer, because that's still, that's two-point-three-three-five million, which is more than the one-point-four we were gonna give it. So we're still doing more work to our roads than what we had originally planned, but we're not taking away from that savings plan, that, that planning for a future, that, that being proactive as opposed to reactive, you know, because we don't know when some of our equipment's gonna fail. I mean, some of it's older than, you know, I've been on council, so.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Uh, Patrick, um, talking about capital equipment, um, you took away, uh, one vehicle from, and I presume that's the truck, right?
Yeah, there was only, what we proposed in this year's budget was all replacement vehicles, except for one, which was a new request from the police department for a, an additional code enforcement vehicle. Since we're, we've been ramping up code enforcement, we've been hiring, um, additional seasonals in the summer, we just haven't had enough vehicles, but it's something that can, can wait, we believe.
So, but the police department got all the vehicles they asked for except the truck?
No, um, they wanted another motorcycle for the traffic, traffic team, which I did not provide in the, in the original budget. Um, I believe they wanted, um, another vehicle for one of their lieutenants, which I did not accept. There was three or four that they did not get.
Okay, Mr. Tullio?
Well, I wanted to ask council, would you guys be interested in putting back the community, um, the block improvement to expand that to districts two, three, and four?
I'd like to talk to that. I know, how many years has that east Wheat Ridge thing been going? A couple of years, hasn't it? And I think it's been very successful, and I think it would be successful that we continue that to other parts of the city. I know there's parts in District Four that the police is, the police have a grant to work on, but I, I think that's important. The other thing I think we should look at is the community engagement and communication in that this is, these are areas that we've asked twenty-twenty to help us with, and I, I think that's a, a good expenditure of our money. Some of the ones down here, the Cisco firewall, is that something that our IT person has said, yes, we can wait on?
Yes, he did.
Okay. The Kipling corridor study, which one was?
That we had a hundred and, uh, we had a hundred and fifty thousand budget originally. That was to do a major sub-area, um, planning market study for the Kipling corridor from basically the whole city, um, just because there's a lot of activity going on right now, and we wanna make sure that we, we plan for how we want it to develop, but we think we can do it for less, so we, we, there's still money available, but...
And is the right-of-way reconciliation for Forty-Fourth Avenue, is that something we would delay? Just, I'm assuming some of these we would delay till later?
Yeah, yeah, these are all things, yeah, they, they wouldn't have been in the budget if we didn't think we needed them, um, and so these are things that we could bring, bring back if, if we have additional revenues.
Okay, and then up on the table, on the, some of the, uh, donations and the table sponsorships, are these amounts that we're seeing here, those were cut in half, is that correct?
Some of them. Um, the circular, senior circular bus, um, we, we had forty-two thousand in, um, but the twelve was an increase over what we've normally give. So most of these are things that are, are new to the budget increases.
Okay.
Um, the five thousand for, for at a food bank, we have fif- we had fifteen total, so we just trimmed it by five. Jeffco Action Center is the full ten. We gave them ten last year, that was for their capital campaign to build their new building. Um, they, they originally asked for thirty thousand, we, we considered we might do ten for three years in a row. Um, Jeffco Outdoor Lab, I believe that was the whole amount?
In, in the new?
Oh, then there's the second line down here, though. So we took the full amount of Jeff, Jeffco Outdoor Lab, sixteen, four, five.
That's the difference that you pulled back out. Do I understand?
And then several lines down, there's another six.
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, it's the full amount. Um, we, we, last year was the first year that we gave them funding. The Zope Circus Carnation Festival combination, they asked for eighty. Um, we, we trimmed it by thirty. General table sponsorships is something we put in the last couple of years, that's just, that's the full amount. That's just for a table, if a table sponsorship comes up, you guys wanna donate to. Um, any other questions?
Well, I'm just wondering if we have this amount of almost eight hundred thousand and we, we pull out some of the items, then we're not exactly balanced, or are we asking him to go back and pull?
We have a few other items. If, if there's something you wanna change, we can, we can go back and add, rebalance it.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, if they're able to come back and say, hey, we can save here and there right now.
We start out by taking them off, in other words, and then put them back if we, if we can afford it.
Um, council member Langworthy, you mentioned wanting to fund the, uh, capital equipment replacement fund. Was that at the one hundred and twenty-five thousand amount, or?
Yeah, that's it, well, it's the equipment transfer. It's what we've been putting in for some time, and having been on a, a council when we weren't putting anything towards our future, we really need to plan for our future.
I just, when I'm looking at this, it, it shows that the remaining balance after two thousand and fifteen in that fund would be four hundred and seventy-four thousand, and then that's, um, just, uh, is it sixty thousand less than where we started at, at the beginning of the year? So it doesn't look like we're, uh, that looks like a pretty decent amount of money remaining in there.
But it, I mean, when, when things come up, they're not gonna be five hundred thousand things, they're gonna be two million dollar things or three million dollar things.
Some are not everything, it's, yeah. The, the point, we're trying to build it up to a healthy reserve. Um, we don't have an exact number, but we're, we've been looking at financial, um, software systems Nate's been looking at, and those could be eight, eight to two million, but we'll get something for a smaller C, cheaper, but, um, so, yeah, I mean, that, that could wait a year or two, but it's, the longer you wait, the smaller the balance you have over the years.
So I guess what, when I, when I...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Sorry. I guess when I look at that, knowing that we're starting the year at five-thirty, uh, as a balance for that, uh, fund, and at the end of the year, we're down to four-seventy-four, taking into consideration the revenues and the expenses that come into that, there's only about a sixty thou- so if you wanted to do that, we could take half of that, and it would bring it back to where it starts at this year, the equipment replacement. So we're not necessarily losing any ground, but we're not gaining any ground.
So you're suggesting that instead of the one twenty-five, you do some smaller amount, half of it, sixty-five or something like that? Mr. Fitzgerald?
I realize what we're about today is cutting, but, uh, we have ten thousand dollars, which in the overall picture is not that much. We have ten thousand dollars for Ridge at Thirty-Eight Events, and I think events on Thirty-Eighth Avenue are the visual indication of our effort to renew Thirty-Eighth Avenue. So I, I would like to put that ten thousand dollars back into...
That's a cut from, there's still eighty, eighty thousand.
There's still eighty?
Yeah, that's a reduction of ten.
Okay.
All right, no, we have a lot of stuff that's being suggested, I don't know if we're hitting any resolutions about them. Mr. Starker?
Uh, I had a question on the, on your proposed cuts for the Zope, pardon me, the Zope Circus and Carnation Festival. Did we start out with a hundred and eight, which was the eighty for the festival and the, and the circus, and then plus the twenty-eight in kind? and then plus the twenty-eight in kind, so we started at a hundred and, a hundred and eight and minus thirty, so we're, we're at seventy-eight? Net for them, does that sort of get the circus or not get the circus, or?
Yeah, we
Is that, is that for another day?
That's up to them, yeah, if they think they can get the circus still, or, or some other event. Um, I, this was kinda based on a little bit of discussion from the last study session. Um, and I, I did speak with, uh, Gina, thank you, Halise, and I, I noted that we were gonna propose this much of a cut, and she said, well, they, they would figure out what they could do with that amount.
Okay. Uh, I, I would like to start going through these items and making decisions about them. Did you have one more thing you wanted to comment, Mr. Zatulio?
Quite a few. Mr. Goff, um, what, what's, what's with the, um, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that was budgeted for Thirty-Eighth Avenue on two B? What, what is, where's money has that gone?
That's, uh, yeah, that's, um, it's shown in the CIP budget as not being spent, so the monies were rolled over into two thousand and fifteen for other CIP projects.
Okay. Would council be opposed if I make a consensus, let's go from there on the budget? Alright, so here's the consensus. I'd ask for a consensus that we look at, uh, moving forward with option one, with additional cuts recommended from staff, and that we would actually return to the budget, the block improvement increases. And I'm gonna throw this one out, the speed trailers, and then if you wanna add anything else, that's your call, but. So option number one, um, with additional cuts from staff to come forward, and then the, put back in the speed trailers and the block improvement, uh, funds.
And you said with additional cuts from staff?
Yes.
With, on the list, yeah.
Oh, that are, that are on this list.
Well, plus any, any other one, any, any other one?
To balance it, yeah.
Balance it, yeah.
To balance what we're putting back in? Okay. That's a consensus?
And I'd like to, I'd like to suggest the community engagement and communication.
The fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So that's seventy, I'm about a hundred.
What are we putting all in?
I have, I got, I have a list here.
I suggest that we wait off, wait on the speed trailer and the, uh, community engagement until we find out what other cuts maybe this, uh, staff will come up with.
Yeah.
So you're hoping to balance those?
Yeah, if they come up with some good stuff, then maybe there's something.
But we're leaving it in block improvement?
Right.
Okay, so we'll leave it in the block.
Just block improvements, at this point? And Jerry, you're okay with that consensus?
Which is twenty?
With respect to the block improvement program, the administration of that, is that done through Wheat Ridge 2020?
It's a, it's a joint program with the police department in, in Wheat Ridge 2020. Yeah, they work together.
I guess, you know, uh, I understand that we're setting aside that communication and, uh, community engagement piece for Wheat Ridge 2020, but, um, I guess part of my concern in funding Wheat Ridge 2020 is that, in their mission statement, they indicate that part of their mission is to influence regulatory and policy changes. We're the largest policy and regulatory body that they interact with. Why are we paying an organization to influence us? That, to me, doesn't seem, uh, productive.
Actually, uh, I believe there are twenty-twenty board members who are on board members, or like our executive director is on a housing board, and that was, is where part of that comes from, if I can answer that much to you, much for you, but if not, then we can speak to Ms.
If, if she's on the state housing board, how does that relate to twenty-twenty when they, in their mission, have excluded housing from their program?
I, I may have just used that as a sample of, of the fact that our, the twenty-twenty board, uh, the director is on other boards where there is policy, like I'm on a Dr. Cog board, and where I'm influencing policy, and I'm making the assumption that the executive director influences policy that affects our city.
I just, um, I think that it's
I mean, I think it's a valid question, but is it a budget question right now, or is it something we could go back and look at?
Well, I think it's a, it's a budget question in the sense that we are funding an organization without giving any other entities a chance to bid for that work. There's other organizations that do similar type of fund administration-type activities that could handle that kind of, uh, operations for us, and it, it just seems like we're handing to one organization, uh, funding without asking, or, or seeing what other options are available to us. And I, I understand that Wheat Ridge 2020 has done a lot of great work in our community, but at the same time, we have to be, uh, we have to hold them accountable, because they do have this sort of, you know, quasi role in the city, that, uh, they, they've continued to receive funding. Uh, they were initially, uh, designed to allow the city to fund them for five years, and then they become self-sustainable, and that's never happened. We're eighty-five to ninety percent of their, uh, revenues, and that, to me, doesn't, uh, help us grow if we can encourage them to get other funding sources as well. And the fact that they've changed their mission from housing to influencing regulatory and policy changes, to me, it seems like a, not an appropriate way for us to be spending our money.
Right now, the consensus I have is option one, with the current staff cuts, but add back the block improvements, and then staff will come back to, to balance, still balance the budget, so we have to subtract block improvements. How much did we take up?
Twenty?
Twenty, so we'll find another twenty thousand to cut.
And others, if you can. And if you can, because they brought, they, we didn't agree on the fifty or twenty-six until you guys came back with what proposals you might have.
Is that part of the consensus?
Are we good on that? Is there anything else we need to add? We have agreed on seventeen percent, right, and we have a consensus? I'm sorry? Right. Aster, with an asterisk, okay. Are we done with the budget discussion? I believe we are. I thought we'd be here till tomorrow. That's pretty good. Alright, let's
Still not adopted.
Still not adopted, but
Um, it's planned to, uh, December eighth is the, uh, the last, uh, last time we can, um, we have to adopt it by, by December eighth, and I think we have it scheduled for that. Um, that's our last meeting on the budget.
Alright, it's time to move on to our next item, which is the post-election review and discussion. Do you wanna start, or does anybody else wanna start on this? Okay.
So, um, I actually put this on the ballot, I mean, on the agenda, because I do think that, uh, I'm sure many people have gotten emails, and I know there's folks here today, and I just wanna open up, uh, discussion as far as, you know, next steps. Um, the changing, the curb and gutter was not approved. Uh, the ballot question was about curb and gutter and changing it permanently. Um, so I think that we need to open up discussions as far as next steps, as, as council, as a city. Um, you know, the good news is, I heard folks even today up at the dais, um, or up at the podium saying, you know, let's work together and come up with a vision, so, um, you know, I'm ready to go there, too, and I think that vision could mean a lot of different things. I think throughout the whole, uh, last three or four months, we heard lots of, lots of different things. People for it, people against it, people against it because, um, of money, people against it because they didn't wanna permanently change curb and gutter, people against it because they didn't wanna certain length of the street, they, you know, wanna shorten it, you know? So I think there are a lot of things out there that need to be discussed. Um, and so I just wanna throw that out there, uh, because we gotta move forward from here.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I would like to just, uh, sort of balance that out with, um, although we heard a lot from people who were against, uh, we all heard privately, and from people who were for.
And forty-two percent.
Right, uh, so I think the question really is, what were people for and what were people against? And, um, I, in, in my conversations with people, nobody ever said they didn't wanna, uh, pay attention to renewing Thirty-Eighth. I think that's, that's a given. People do want to renew Thirty-Eighth. Um, so I would just like to put that in the mix. Um, obviously, it's harder now since we don't have any extra money, right, we don't have any money, so we're gonna have to put cardboard plants up there instead of real plants, but.
I think the one thing we can agree on is the parking. Could change it.
I'm sure.
Mr. Zatulio.
Well, I do know that Mr. Pond had made a motion while back to, to look at removing the back-end parking. I think that should be taken care of as soon as possible, and then taking some of the smaller planters, put them back on the sidewalk so they're not in the road, especially during the snowstorm. But, that being said, I think those should happen soon to show some goodwill towards this process. But I also agree that probably, starting in the first of the year, we should start having some discussions with the, with the broader community, have maybe either a town meeting about Thirty-Eighth Avenue, or some district meetings, well, probably a town meeting about Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and start hearing from all sides to get a win-win, uh, design and going. I mean, the, the striping itself of the project was about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't think anybody has told me, get rid of all the banners, and get rid of all, all the events, and get rid of all the stuff that's been going on there. The, the main issue I heard was either the price or the lineage. So I think that if we, as a city, as a council, scheduled some community meetings in January to get, to hear from both sides, all sides, and then come up with a win-win or a compromise for the, for the springtime, cuz we can't do much now anyway with the weather, that would be acceptable to me.
Other comments?
I, I would just like to say, though, that I, I don't think we ought to make any precipitous moves here until we have a better handle on an, an overall picture. For, for example, I don't wanna start getting rid of back-end parking or some other thing, right at the moment. Yeah, I agree, everybody hates it.
That's like a no-brainer, kind of.
I agree that everybody hates it. I just don't wanna start tearing it apart bit by bit, because everybody can find something they dislike about it, so.
Madam?
Yeah.
I think that that, uh, eventuality was planned for in the proposal of the road diet being a study, that it wasn't a permanent road diet, because the curb and gutter was not changed. Because it was a study, the, the conclusion of that study was a vote of the people who decidedly said that this is not something we will want in our community. That doesn't dismantle all the work that's been done on Thirty-Eighth. That just removes the biggest barrier to the majority of citizens enjoying Thirty-Eighth for what it is. It's a great place for us to come together as a community. But when you talk about not wanting to make any precipitous moves, the, the voters have already moved on this, and we're the ones behind the eight ball by not making any, uh, decisive action in removing back-end parking, cuz nobody likes that. There, there's not some committee out there, you know, championing back-end parking. It's just not there. So, that's just a very simple example of one way that we can listen to the voters, get rid of that. And then, as we look at, uh, the amount of money that was pre-allocated for the design work and whatnot, if we can take a small portion of that and listen to the, the will of the people, and create some kind of compromise in removing the road diet, because that was a temporary structure that was designed to be temporary, to see how everybody liked it. A vote was taken. Everybody voted to put it on the ballot, and if you voted to put it on the ballot, you have to accept the consequences of that vote, and that's to reduce, uh, the road diet, take, get rid of the road diet.
I have a question. What, the vote wasn't about the road diet. The vote was about narrowing the street, and
Which is a road diet.
It was about the curb and gutter.
Which is a road diet.
Wait a second. Let's, let's let her finish. This is not an argument. Let's let her finish. You had your opportunity.
I just, I don't feel that the vote was about four lanes versus the road diet. The vote was on the ballot about the distance for the street for a future implementation of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and the voters did say they weren't in favor of that. And, but I, I think overall, we have agreed that people do want to improve Thirty-Eighth Avenue, but to say that this is putting it back to four lanes wasn't what the ballot issue was about. And that's just a statement I would, I'd like to make. I think everybody wants to improve Thirty-Eighth Avenue, uh, in some way, and getting to an agreement on that is, now we're gonna go back to what you suggested, probably town hall meetings to talk to everyone, to bring forward more plans. Now, this was done years and years ago, but it, obviously, the voters have said they wanted to continue that discussion. So, um, I, I'm real reluctant to put this street back to forty-seven miles an hour. I think it's harder for people to walk. I, I think that the traffic speed really has to be addressed in some, some manner.
Let, let me, I, I need to put something in here, too. I agree that the, the ballot question was not about, we had to, because of the charter, make it, we had to make it a legal change in, in the size. We can do, we call it the road diet, we can do anything we want to, with, with or without four lanes or three lanes. The ballot question was to make us legal, so that we could legally do it. We do not have to do it to, to continue with a three-lane arrangement that we have today. To me, the ballot issue, what really was going on, was the nine-point-three million dollars that was all over the, the city. This is what the people really voted against. When they saw that figure, you know, you can say, gee, I want a new car, but it costs, you know, fifty thousand dollars. You're gonna say, no, I don't want it. So I don't think we want to just assume why the, why the voters this, voted this way, or that way, or another way. What we have to do is try to come to a conclusion that is the most valuable for the whole city. And it could be some sort of a combination of whatever we need to do, to where people can say, I like this, I'm proud, I'm glad to be here. We've also have many businesses who have come here, who have, who are betting on their future based on what we did create. And I am not real fond of throwing all them, all of that out the window and saying, hey, we're going back to forty-seven miles per hour, we're going back to, uh, a highway instead of a main street. So I think what we also have to do is work on, what can we do that works for all of us?
Getting back to your comments, I think, you know, if the ballot question had just said the width, you know, forty, going from this, this width to this width, it was about the width, but it also talked about a vision, and that was put in, and everybody voted for that vision. So, what I'm seeing, what the voters said was, they didn't like narrowing the street permanently, for whatever reason, and this vision. So that's why I still think we should put some good faith effort ever to get rid of the back-end parking now, when, when the weather gets clear enough, put some of the planters back on the sidewalks so they're not in the way within this winter, and then have some town meet, meetings, and even maybe look at that survey that, uh, we're gonna be doing here, the big survey. Are we still doing the survey this year, the?
Yes, it's in the budget, next year.
There's also some information you could put in there about different, about Thirty-Eighth Avenue, if you want. That's a three-thousand-person survey, plus we have the town meeting, so, um, I really think, though, Tim, I, I get what you're saying, but I really think we should show the public that we're, we did listen to something, and everybody's been against that back-end parking from the beginning. Staff would have to go out there and just re-stripe it, it's not gonna be a big deal. Put some planters back on the sidewalk so they're not in the, in the right-of-way, and then schedule some meetings after the first of the year to, with the greater community, the bigger community, and have some discussion, maybe in part of that survey, if we, if we can come up with some questions in the survey.
Mr. Starker.
You know, when I look at it, the, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue plan, as a plan, is, is a, is a broader, more comprehensive, uh, approach to what we're going to do, or what we hope to do with Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and what we hope to do to, to kind of vitalize that street into a main street or downtown district. You know, the vote itself, uh, talks specifically about the, the width, and to, to make it in conformance with the Thirty-Eighth Avenue vision, or the vision of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue plan. I, you know, I think, when I look at the, when I look at it, when I read the tea leaves, and you can read them however you want to, to me, it was a pretty expensive proposition, you know? But I don't think that if you take the, if you take the vote and, and say, let's just throw out the Thirty-Eighth Avenue plan, to throw out the baby with the bathwater, I think is a bad approach to that. You know, I think we should direct staff to go back and, and look at the, look at the goals, and I think we, you know, to bring us back some options that we can put out to, in town hall meetings or in other forums, that we really have a lot of buy-in and input from the, from the public at large, um, to try to achieve the goals of the Thirty-Eighth Avenue plan while not spending nine-point-three million dollars. And, uh, you know, there may be, there may be a lot of ways to, to skin that cat. I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's to decrease the length of the downtown district, maybe it's to, to do various things with the road width in a different configuration, but there's a lot of different options that we can look at in doing that, you know? Um, I, you know, I don't know, the, how many back-end parking spots do we have? Thirty? You know, eight or ten? You know, if, and if that, if that's a perceptive issue, I think, you know, if, if, if you don't, you know, if you can stripe it in the winter, be hard to stripe it yesterday or today, but maybe next week, it'll be alright, but.
Okay, I will concede the back-end parking. But I don't, but I, I don't agree with moving the planters. Uh, people are used to it, it's there, 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 it's not a danger, nobody, there's no actions there, uh, and I don't wanna and I don't want to give the impression that we're going to go back to four lanes.
Well, I don't, that wasn't the, so I guess I'll ask for a consensus to direct staff to go ahead and implement Mr. Pond's previous motion of at least re-striping and eliminating the back-end parking as soon as we can. That's my consensus.
I think you gave us a cost on that before. What was the cost on that? I mean, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, I can't, I'm sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head. It's, yeah, it's not, it's not as simple as just re-striping. There's got to be some, have to be some reconfiguration done so that people aren't, because it's going to change the width of that area, so. I don't think that's allowed. I don't think we allow pull-in parking by code. But yeah, we can, I mean, if it's consensus, we'll look at it and bring it back and tell you-
So we might just eliminate that parking?
I don't know if some of the businesses would like that, but we could bring that option back, too, and look at head-in, see if you want to change your ordinance, if you want to let head-in parking, or see what it would cost to do parallel parking.
When?
Soon as we can. Is that? Did we get a consensus on that?
I think we did.
Okay.
The consensus was that staff is going to give us an idea of whether we need to change it to front-end parking, or parallel parking, or standing on end parking, something that we-
Are you okay with that other consensus? Go back and study it? Well, we need to have staff. Yeah. So anyway, if we've got, you know, if we're done with the back-end parking, then I would make a consensus that we direct staff to go back and look at the objectives of the corridor. I'm sorry. That we direct staff to go back and look at the vision of the corridor plan, and look at how we might come up with some other creative options to still forward the vision of the plan and not spend so much money, and that they bring that, they bring that back to council, and we bring it back so that we can have and develop forums that we can discuss that through the community.
I can, I could give you some feedback on 2A. I think, based on talking to the community, I was out there a lot during the election, I think 2A had some issues. One was, I think, 38th Avenue, and 2B brought it down. I also think the threat of a Walmart coming into the city, perceived or not, and funding that with a TIF, had a lot of people turned off about it. I'm just being honest with what I've heard. The other thing was marijuana itself. People were upset about marijuana in the city, as far as 38th and Miller and a few other places. And then, I think, there was this trust factor of taking $40 million, and then $40 million of interest, and bringing it into that expense of the $40 million bond. And so, maybe the bond might not have been the best option, but I think, unfortunately, Walmart's big out there. I mean, District 1 is covered with no Walmart signs, and these folks were saying, we're not going to support it if any money goes to that development, and it's going to be a TIF. I'm just being honest, I'm not-
You know, I would like to say-
I would like to say something, too, about, in reference to 2B. I don't, I don't, I think we should have let these citizens know how we were going to come up with enough money for it, because you can have a beautiful vision, and you can have a lot of reasons that were really virtuous and good for doing this project. But if you're sitting out there and not being sure how the heck we're going to pay for it, I don't think that that helped us a whole bunch. So I would really like to, as Mr. Stark has pointed out, if we're going to come up with another plan, kind of know how the heck, how that it would be a financially feasible plan, and I think that's important. And that then also probably hurt 2A, along with, as Mr. DiTulio mentioned, the bonding possibility afterward. So I don't think our citizens felt that we were, you know, really being good shepherds, and I think that we'll probably be changing that quite a bit.
One thing I wanted to reaffirm is, Mr. Stark's consensus that when staff brings back some different options, that we have more than one. I mean, remember, we had talked about a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, we didn't have no Plan B for 2B. So I think that if we come back with some different options, we look at different laneage, different options, I mean, with the idea of streetscape and everything that we have, but also have some different choices that we can look at, so that the community can look at and say, like that one, don't like that one, maybe blend those two. Because I haven't heard anybody say they didn't like the streetscape ideas and the events, all the-
Oh, people loved it. Yeah, yeah, there's no if, ands, or buts about that. Anything else on that discussion, on the election discussion?
Plan B, 2B, 2C, 2D.
Well, I guess I have a question regarding, this was done during the last 10 years. This was done through several councils, and weren't different plans proposed?
Yeah, there were numerous plans in many, many, many community meetings.
And many, many community meetings. So I'm just curious, how is what we're doing now going to be different from how we did it before? And I think that's something to think about, because there were people that were unhappy with how this plan came about, and I think to prevent wasting any more money, how are we going to make this a little bit different? We're never going to make anybody, everybody happy. I think, I think we know that. Somebody's always not going to like the plan a lot. And so, I guess, I don't, and I'm not telling you, Patrick, what to do, but what can we do differently that we, I don't know?
I wanted to make a comment. So Genevieve, that's been the comment out there, that this has been going on for 10 or 15 years. I think I'm the only one that's been part of that 10 or 15 years. I don't remember a road diet being part of 10 or 15 years. We did the original streetscape on 38th Avenue from Harlan East in 2000, and that was 2.5 million for all that streetscape. Then about three years ago, we had talked about creating a leadership committee for 38th Avenue, and the council asked to meet and appoint a committee, and that committee was to look at streetscape and amenities, Harlan West. And I remember, as soon as that, they started meeting with the consultants and staff, we heard about the road diet. And that's where the road diet actually came in, was about three or four years ago, in these leadership meetings. But it was an appointed committee by the mayor, and it was a smaller group. So I don't think, when we did the streetscape east of Harlan, we did have community meetings and town meetings, and that's when we had totally different councils, and it did, it was more inclusive. So I think we'll be okay if we go out and show them different options and not just one option, because the difference is, we spent money on a pilot project, and a lot of people didn't like the pilot. So I don't think we have to spend all that money on a pilot right now. We can give them different options before we spend our money on a pilot. That's where the difference, I think, is. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying, I think that's where the mistake was, was a lot of money on a pilot project that not everybody felt was part of the discussion.
But I'd like to address that, because I attended a couple of the meetings that they had about the road diet over at the 580. And, I mean, they weren't, you know, you weren't getting hundreds of people, but you, the first meet I went to probably had about 80 people or so. I mean, it was in the cafeteria at the Wheat Ridge 580, there were about four of those, three or four of those. So to say that we didn't have meetings that talked about the road diet was false. And then, I thought there was also some outreach to the people through mailers as well. So, I mean, I kind of agree with Genevieve. We did try to do these things. We didn't get people's interest in it until they actually saw what happened, as is prone to happen sometimes. Until you understand what happens to you, it's okay, or maybe it doesn't matter as much. But then, when the impact is more relevant, then that's when it becomes relevant for you. And I think the difference this time is now, more people are aware of it, whereas before we were trying to get people to be aware of it, engaged in it, we weren't getting any response, and now we have people very aware of it. And so I think that these outreaches are going to have a better impact than when we first tried to do it, because I remember trying to get people to come, and it was just a struggle. I mean, am I wrong? I mean, I remember going to some of them.
No, no, I think it's a point well taken. It's become a very hot topic, and it'll get much more input now. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I just, sort of speaking to Jen, I think one of the problems was, we failed to describe this in an understand, in a quick, concise, understandable way. The whole, the 10-year-long plan was a problem, and then it was too gauzy. You know, nobody knows what we meant when we said a town center. And a main street, everybody immediately went to the idea of old town. Well, we're not old town, we're never going to be old town, but we had our own vision, but we never described it very well. And I think that was our main problem.
I think we're also forgetting that it was part of the NRS? Did I say that?
Yeah, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy was done in 2005. I think there was a lot of citizen outreach, and I think a lot of comments that were made were that the community wanted a downtown main street. You know, it didn't specifically say a road diet. Yeah, no, but I think that the 10-year timeframe was a discussion about people wanting a place in Wheat Ridge, a downtown, a main street, and that's kind of where that 10-year timeframe started, and then it filtered down.
Even now, we're talking about the road diet, when really, it wasn't about the road diet, it was about the vision of a walking, biking, pleasant, entertainment-oriented center. You know, and the road diet was just a part of that, to slow down traffic and make it quieter.
If you're having trouble wrapping your brain around the outcome of the election, it is the road diet. That is the problem. People do not have a problem investing and forwarding the plan for 38th Avenue and encouraging business. It is the restriction of traffic in that main thoroughfare that is a regional thoroughfare. That is the issue. And the voters voted on that, and if you aren't able to really kind of grasp that and accept that that was the will of the voters, then you may be doing something else on Monday nights. It just, you have to understand that, when I ran for city council, part of my platform was to remove the road down 38th. And when I talked to voters, that's what they said. They said they loved 38th Avenue, it's a place to go, but they don't like the restriction of traffic. And if we can come to some middle ground to address that issue, that's when you're going to understand the will of the voters. And with respect to the meetings that have been had, I've participated in meetings where city staff has done nothing but sell the plan that's in place, that they're not seeking input, they're selling what's being put forth, and there's a stark contrast between those two approaches. An input meeting should be to receive input, not to sell the plan that has been developed by consultants and by city staff, it's to hear from the residents what they want to see have happen. And I think that's where the rub is.
Well, that, I need to speak to that, because the very initial meetings were input-only, and there was no plans, no, nothing. It was a bunch of stickies, and citizens could say, this is what we want. And then, you have to get to a certain point, at some point, where you need to bring a product back to your citizens, say, and get their reaction, and that was the process. So, that's all I have to say.
I do want to say, I was at every single one of those meetings, all the before, all the foreplanning, even when the idea first came through, which was, we had won some kind of consulting, and that was when the suggestion came. And I found it to be a very open, a lot of support for it, and we've tried our best here to make this work. So I think that's about it. I think we've chatted about this enough, haven't we? Is there, can we close this subject now? We are going to try to come to some kind of a point where we do something satisfactory so that we retain a what we've gained. Let's retain what we've gained, and that's all I have to say. Okay. Can we move on from this one?
I just want to ask Patrick a question. So were you okay with the idea that we're going to bring up, you're going to come up with different options based on that original 38th Avenue vision?
Correct.
Okay.
That was the consensus.
And I think that's where the rub is, and Genevieve, that's where the rub is, is that the NRS does call for all these cool things. It was the piece that sent this over the edge three years ago, was that road diet piece. And, you know, we, the NRS was very popular, you know, fix-and-flips, housing, the whole bit. It's the road diet part that's caused the split in the community. That's what I think we were trying to say a year ago, Zach and I, not trying to say we told you so, but it was kind of like, guys, we got to look at some other options.
I think we also have polling that says people want walkability, and they want, you know, a lot of these things that create that vision. And I agree, it's our difference on how do we create that, and how does traffic fit into that? And I have to say that I like the slower traffic. It's easier to walk, and I think that's an issue. How does traffic fit into the vision of, how is that 38th Avenue main street going to look like with the traffic? And where do we, you know, and where does the public want that to be? And that's what we're going to have to find out.
Well, don't forget, the original poll, before the price came out, the original poll, the majority of the citizens liked what we were doing on 38th. It was a very much plus, but when we started talking about what it could possibly cost, that changed a lot of thinking. So before you just assume that one way or the other, we have to look at all the things, all the variables that are in the equation. And I think that would be a fair way of looking at whatever we do with 38th Avenue. Okay. I can't quite close this conversation.
I just, you mentioned that poll. The only poll that matters is the one that happened on November 7th. That's the one where voters were given a chance to vote, and they voted. And to mention the other poll, the poll was, do people like 38th Avenue? Yes, we love Wheat Ridge, we love 38th Avenue, we want to see investment in that. But it's, when people were given the chance to vote, they voted no on the road diet, and that's the issue.
Okay. Enough said.
Mayor, I have one quick staff report, if you have time. There's been some interest expressed by some of you, I honestly can't remember who, to look at officially adopting study session minutes. I think, because those do become public, they go on the website, they're distributed, and I think what I heard is you want to see them and approve them in some format before they're actually made public. I talked to Mr. Dahl, and we could do it different ways. You could adopt them at your regular meetings, business meetings, as you do with other minutes, or you could just bring them to the next study session and have a consensus to approve them as written.
We used to approve them on the dais.
On the dais, you did?
Long time ago.
Yep. Is that something you want to start doing at a regular meeting? They'd be sent out in your packet, you'd have time to read them?
I would probably rather review them in the context of this meeting, because they are the minutes of this meeting, would be my preference, rather than to hold them to a regular meeting where we're looking at another set of meeting minutes.
There's no formal business.
Well, that was the question, should we approve or not?
Or just at least have a consensus that you guys, as a body, are fine with them being posted as public? Just to make sure there's no corrections in things you've said, or it doesn't matter to me.
I think it's important that the business meeting to present what was happening at the study sessions, because this is an unusual night, but most times, study sessions aren't well-attended, and I think bringing that to the business meeting gives us a chance to see what happened there, or other people to see what happened there, potentially. I just don't like approving or consenting some public document that then gets published without any formal action.
They're published today. Without form of action. Yeah. I hear you. It's really up to you. We can do it either way, except I don't care.
I'd ask for consensus that we approve them on the dais.
Before you vote on that, could I say something? I am very offended that I was not part of that discussion. And I would like to tell you that I don't even know how many cities are out there where the clerk does not even attend the study sessions. There are no notes to the study sessions. So just consider that. But I am very offended that you did not consult me about that before you present that to council.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I have no intention of that. It just came to my mind that that was brought to my attention, and I need to get consensus from this body since they're their minutes. to get consensus from this body since they are their minutes.
I'll ask for consensus that we just approve them with our other minutes on the dais. So they'll be in the packet.
Yeah, because they would, they have them all in one, you can look at them.
Is that going to work?
I guess, Madam Clerk, what would be your thought on that matter?
I, I just, what is the point of, they're, they're just notes? What's the, is there a problem with them?
Discussions that I remember or, or requests I heard is that they're notes and, and they're, they're notes of comments made by elected officials and, and they go on the web and, they go out on the web before they have a chance to, to maybe approve them. So there's no will intent, it's just, I think they want to, council wants to see them before they, they're made public.
You mean, like the draft minutes that go out?
Yeah, just the notes.
But the draft minutes go out before they're approved?
As a draft?
So can the draft notes of the study session go out before they're approved?
Yeah, I guess if, yeah, if the minutes go out that way, I guess. It's, yeah.
I mean, I, I would think it would be like any other, like the minutes of the regular meeting. I mean, they're not really official until we vote to approve them.
True.
The, the same would be the minutes of the study session that, you know, we, we do, and you do a nice job of the minutes of the study session as you do the minutes of the, you know, the regular meetings, would just give us an opportunity to sort of put a, you know, recognize that we've reviewed them and that they, they reflect what, you know, they're approved, yes.
Okay.
So my consensus was to have them in the business packet, is that okay with council?
Okay, that's all I have here.
Okay, I believe, unless there's some other elected official reports, I believe the-
I had one-
I'm sorry?
I, I do have a matter and it's not really controversial. I wanted, wanted to ask the council members, how many of you have printers at home? Could you raise your hands? Most. In the future, if we have a packet that is as small as the one that you had for tonight, how would you be with just having it emailed to you and then you could print it off yourself rather than pay for the time and cost of delivering it to your house? I just throwing that out there.
I assume we've already, I was confused why I kept getting them, because that's why we paid the fees to keep that from happening.
Yeah, so I-
That, that whole IT thing is not my deal, so I don't know about that.
But I guess the bigger, the bigger question is, is do we need packets at home anymore? And I personally don't.
I do.
Okay.
Actually, I thought the consensus was when you approved the iPads that-
That we would quit the delivery.
Surface that we wouldn't do packets anymore.
Right. So, so basically-
I would, consensus to stop the delivery of the council packets?
Jerry, Jerry, go practice. Go practice, Jerry.
Oh, and I'm the other way. I've got it, but I don't know how to use it.
It seems that some of us are using them and some of us are not. So maybe one at a time. Go ahead.
So may I make a consensus that beginning 2015, no more delivered packets? No, 2015. So you all have one month to get it together. On your surface. Hey, that was a group.
And I, I'm, maybe I wanted to add this in, one thing, Christie, that if there is something large and cumbersome that's, hmm, multi-paged and hard to read and that kind of thing that we, that you all talked about in the study session, that maybe that would be delivered?
Yeah, like the budget, but yes. But I could still look at those on my surface.
Okay.
I could make it bigger, smaller. Yeah. Like if it was a big map or something, yeah. Exactly.
Don't mention it.
Well, when the council chambers gets updated, we'll have a camera.
It's peg feet. Can't use it for anything else.
Okay. There'll be a camera that we can set up in a corner, below the documents up on the screen to be tuned up size.
Is-
Are these new?
Madam Mayor and Patrick, is this something that needs to be formally approved at a meeting?
No.
Not.
Okay.
Some of us, myself included, may never use the electronic device.
Who gets to be the lucky one that tells Janice tomorrow that she doesn't have to put packets together anymore? Yeah.
She still has to do it, it's just-
But she doesn't have to assemble them.
You guys have to work out what you've got.
Well, I didn't, I didn't mean to start some kind of avalanche of thing. I just wanted to ask about when it was three pages, you know, it's kind of silly to be delivering it to your house, but if you want the whole thing online.
Are we ready now? All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.